Good afternoon. We're calling to order council meeting at this time. I'm going to ask the clerk to read the report of compliance with the Freedom of Information.
Thank you, Clarence, for the Freedom of Information Act notice that meetings and agendas were posted and furnished on the 30th of September 2018.
Executive session thirty dash four dash seven zero. The public body may hold a meeting closed to the public for one or more of the following reasons. Number two.
Discussion of negotiations instant proposed contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property to receive legal advice or the legal advice related to pending threat or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege settlement of legal claims or the position of public agency in other adversary situations involving the exertion against the agency or claim. U.S.C.B. MICP tax net number zero six three one eight zero three zero zero three, tax net number zero eight seven zero 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 five zero zero eight and zero eight seven zero 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 five zero zero nine. Number five, discussion of matter relating to proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Prospect update, Project Mr. C., Project Veggie, Project D Word and Dana Black of Southern Carolina Alliance.
Thank you. At this time, we call for motion to go into executive session.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay. Good afternoon. At this time, we're going to call for a motion to come out of executive session.
Make a motion that we come out of executive session?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Are there any motions coming out of executive session?
Yes, Madam Vice Chairwoman, I do have one motion. I make a motion to authorize the county administrator to accept a utility tax credit grant of seventy-four thousand five hundred dollars from Palmetto Electric Cooperative to be used to assist Project Veggie and to further authorize the county administrator to execute a grant agreement contract with Palmetto Electric Cooperative for the use of these funds.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
We need the flag and prayer.
At this time, we ask you to please stand for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation by Councilman Kim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with clear teeth and justice for all.
Me?
Yeah.
Father God, please help us in our deliberations. And all the people here, thank God for their being here. A good citizen is an informed citizen, so be it. Amen.
Call for a motion on approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to take off eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one from the consent agenda. Yes.
Okay, three items have been removed from the consent agenda. So at this time, we call for the approval of the remaining.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At this time. On to the approval of the regular agenda.
Make a...
Go on.
Make a motion that we approve the regular agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is the solicitor here? Maybe he's running a little late. If he comes, um, there he is running around. Okay. Proclamation, Chief Russell Wells.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the council. Moving forward into October, which is very fast approaching, the fire service industry declares the week of October sixth through the tenth and twelfth as Fire Prevention Week. It is a time where the fire service reflects on fire safety measures and likes to raise the awareness and promote that. So if you'll give me just a moment, I'll run through the proclamation. Whereas the safety and well-being of the citizens of Jasper County are paramount and the proactive prevention of fires is essential to protecting lives and property. And whereas fire departments and rescue services across Jasper County, including the Jasper County Fire Rescue, Hardyville Fire Department, Ridgeland Fire Department, and other vital first responders are dedicated to safeguarding our community from the dangers of fire and other emergencies. And whereas Fire Prevention Week provides an opportunity to emphasize the importance of fire safety education and the need for residents to understand the role they play in preventing fires and reducing fire-related injuries and fatalities. And whereas this year's Fire Prevention Week themed smoke alarms, "Make Them Work For You," strives to educate everyone about the importance of having working smoke alarms in the home, urging all Jasper County residents to check and replace smoke alarms wherever they reside or own a home. Whereas the collaboration between Jasper County's fire departments, rescue services, schools, businesses, and community organizations is essential in promoting fire safety and preparedness. And whereas, by observing Fire Prevention Week, we acknowledge the tireless efforts of our firefighters, paramedics, rescue personnel who risk their lives daily to protect our communities and respond to emergencies with courage and professionalism. And whereas, the people of Jasper County are encouraged to participate in fire prevention activities at home, in schools, and at community events, ensuring that every citizen understands how to prevent and respond to fires effectively. Now, therefore, the Jasper County Council does hereby proclaim the week of October sixth through twelfth, 2024, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Jasper County, South Carolina, encourages all citizens to join in promoting fire safety practices, supporting our local fire departments and rescue services, and taking proactive steps to ensure a safer community for all.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Chief Wells.
Thank you.
Very much.
That reminds me, you've got to go, my fire alarm.
Kimberly Burgess. Approval of the resolution R. two zero two four dash twenty-eight, finding that normal daily operation of the Jasper County Detention Center are affected by the necessity for additional fencing within and without certain areas of the detention center in pursuit of two dash four one two of the Jasper County Code of Ordinance. Allows for emergency procurement with normal daily operation are affected and authorizing the county administrator to create the contracts and obtain the service on behalf of Jasper County and matters related thereof. Ms. Burgess?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, members of council. As Mrs. Clark read, this is a resolution approving the emergency procurement of various fencing in various locations within and without the Jasper County Detention Center. There are three different quotes. The first one is for some interior fencing in the male maximum housing units. And it is installing fencing on the top floor of these housing units to prevent inmate altercations, particularly gang-related conflicts, and reduce the risk of individuals being thrown over the rails. We have an increased inmate population and high-profile gang members present a significant risk of physical altercations. This particular area is a quote for five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. There's a phase two or some exterior fencing also in a male housing unit to reinforce the area outside of this unit where a previous escape occurred. The inmate has exploited the ceiling in the bathroom, gaining access outside. So the solution is to install this protective barrier around the area and reinforce the roof structure. And that quote is seventeen thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. I think it's actually nineteen thousand three hundred. I think there was an additional two thousand nine hundred and thirty-five to add wire transfer to that. Wire, not wire, razor wire, can't say it right. So that was nineteen thousand three hundred. Then there's another part, which is perimeter security fencing, and that's around the building's exterior and to again secure the perimeter and control movement around the facility. And that is, quote, is sixty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So it's a total of ninety-four thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is, does not include the sales tax. And this quote, so one of these quotes exceeds the county administrator's authorization. Therefore, we thought we'd bring all three. And we're asking in this resolution that the purchase not, that the council approved the purchase not to exceed one hundred and two thousand, which we anticipate could include or will include some applicable sales tax. And that this will be funded from a capital outlay account oh five eight five oh nine five in the current Detention Center departmental budget.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burgess. Do the council have any questions?
I do have a question. This will get everything up to par, and we're having to do the emergency because we're so over the intake levels?
And we've already had issues. So we want to make sure that we're taking care of it as quickly as possible.
And what will the dates of completion look like?
Um, I don't have an answer to that right now. I know that it's a gray bar and they're pretty quickly, they respond very quickly. So, but I don't have an answer, I don't think. Let me double check before I... Their quotes is difficult to read. So it doesn't, I don't see on here where there's a delivery timeframe. I can get that. It should be as quick as possible.
Right, just get it quick as possible.
Yes.
If there be no more questions?
Madam Chairman, just one question. Is this addition or is this something new? Are these new fences or?
Some of the interior are new. And then the exterior, I want to say, I'm sorry, and the perimeter is new as well. So these are different areas that were not previously covered by fencing.
So they let the inmates out into the, is that what it's for?
I think this is if someone manages to get out, it will prevent them from getting out of the area, out of the actual area of the detention center.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we call for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution two zero two four dash twenty-eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Madam Vice Chair?
Yeah.
Solicitor is here to do the presentation.
Oh, he finally made it. Come on in.
Madam Chairwoman, members of council, sorry I was running late. I had a little car trouble. What I'm going to run through really tonight is something that I think is particularly important for Jasper County and it's particularly important actually for our entire circuit. What I'm going to show you tonight is an overall circuit breakdown of what has happened in the last fiscal year. And primarily what I want to focus on first is a Supreme Court order. In July of two thousand twenty-three, the South Carolina Supreme Court passed, handed down, so to speak, a Supreme Court order which instructed all of our courts, from our judges, our solicitors, our public defenders, our clerks of court, how criminal court needs to run in the state of South Carolina. Having been doing, having done this job since nineteen eighty-nine, I will tell you that this is the first game plan, so to speak, I've ever seen. It's the first time that the Supreme Court has ever come forward with specific instructions and specific goals for a criminal justice system. And quite frankly, I think it's one of the best orders I think I've ever seen. And I've seen a lot of them. The preamble of this order starts out, and primarily this is the entire concern for the entire criminal justice system. In an efficient criminal justice system, cases should come to fruition in a matter of months instead of a matter of years. This is the primary goal of this case management order, but it's the primary goal, I will tell you, of every solicitor in South Carolina. The idea that we have to go to a jury, in front of a jury, and talk to them about cases that are three and four and five years old is difficult, to say the least. I will tell you that we talk about defendants' rights to speedy trials all the time. But having done this as long as I have, I will tell you that every victim I know wants a speedy trial. And every solicitor I know wants a speedy trial. It makes it more difficult for us to do our job when we are talking about older cases. So I applaud the Supreme Court and their overall concept of making sure we can develop a system in which cases come to fruition in a matter of months instead of a matter of years. The next thing the order talks about is how, so how do you do that? How do you look at the criminal justice system and make it work the way it needs to work? And the court has basically said, you've got to do two things. You've got to deal with old cases. And with the onslaught of COVID that shut down all of our courts in South Carolina for about a year and a half, every circuit solicitor, every courthouse has a massive amount of old cases that are sitting there. But I thought what was interesting about the Supreme Court approach on this was not only did they say you need to deal with the old cases, which everybody recognizes, they said, you know, you also need to deal with the front-end cases. The statistics that we drew from about five or six years of court administration tells us that very few cases will actually end up going to trial. And that's a nationwide statistic. Usually less than one percent of all cases that come into the criminal justice system actually go into a courtroom for a trial. And yet, throughout the years, that's all we've ever talked about. How do you run the courtroom? This Supreme Court order outlines that and says, here's what you need to do. And they use the language, the court's intention. Well, I'm a lawyer and a prosecutor, and I've decided that when the Supreme Court says it's their intention, that's a directive. So we're going to do this, exactly how they tell us to do it. They said that you need three things. Number one is everybody knows you need enough lawyers to run a courtroom. You've got to be able to try cases. You've got to be able to try multiple cases in a single week. And you need to have the staff to do that. Everybody recognizes that. What they don't recognize is that in order to perform well in a courtroom, you have to have time to prepare to be in a courtroom. I assure you that the New England Patriots don't just show up on Sunday and pick up eleven guys and say, hey, what do you guys want to do for the next three hours? You've got to prepare. And so what this order said is you need a certain number of prosecutors to run court, but you need another certain number of lawyers to be ready to run the next month's court work. And then they offered one other thing. You need to have a triage system. You need to have a system that takes these cases as they come in and bring them in and work on them as new cases. And so what they have basically outlined is this reverse triangle. And the reverse triangle basically is you start with a large number of cases that come in. You start working on those right as they come in. Your job is to talk to police officers, talk to victims, start getting them ready. And as that pyramid gets to the bottom, you are moving more cases as time is going on. So this is what we have put into place throughout our entire circuit, again on the directive of the Supreme Court. So here's how we did it. First, in Beaufort County, we did a team rotation. The team rotation is basically you have a certain number of lawyers, two lawyers on each team. Each group of lawyers are prepared to work in their particular areas, and that is triage, prep, and court. I have two lawyers working on new cases coming in. I have two lawyers getting ready for the next court term. And I have two lawyers that are actually running court. That group of lawyers will end up needing to be three lawyers. But right now, we have two per team, and that's the rotation basis. And they rotate basically one month they're in court, the next month they're in triage, and the next month they're in preparation. If you don't do it that way, then there is no real triage. Because if they've got to be in court at the same time that they got to work on a new case, they're not going to be calling a police officer, they don't have time. So the team rotation works in Beaufort. Jasper did not have enough people, and we didn't have enough funding to set that up to do just a Jasper rotation. We certainly didn't have enough for teams, but quite frankly, we didn't have enough to run the entire thing. So what we've had to do is we've had to combine Jasper with Hampton. And so what we've done is we've got one career criminal prosecutor that is in court every time, and we rotate single lawyers. So one lawyer's on prep, one lawyer's on triage, and one lawyer's on court. It is good, except for the fact that while they're running Jasper Court, next week they're probably going to need to be running Hampton Court. And so while the lawyers are bringing in cases from Jasper, they're also doing it from Hampton. So what that has done is less than ideal, but the rotation is in place and we are doing what the Supreme Court tells us to do. So here are the results. This is a fiscal year, and these are all numbers from the, from our office throughout our entire five counties. But I will tell you that just about every county is consistent with this. Our overall production is up eighty-seven percent. I have been, again, doing this for an awful long time, and I've never seen consistently high numbers like this. Our conviction rate, our conviction numbers are up seventy-two percent. This time last fiscal year, we had seven hundred and sixty-four convictions. As of the end of this fiscal year, we had a thousand three hundred and fourteen. Three times more people are going into diversion programs than they were this time last year. That in itself is a pretty tremendous thing. These are people going through PCI, pre-trial intervention, people that are first-time nonviolent offenders. That our rate on that, our success rate on that is right at eighty-six percent. So if we put people into pre-trial intervention, our statistics say we'll never have to deal with them again. So it's a good program. Same, similar results from our multidisciplinary court. This is our drug court, our mental health court, our veterans court, a court that we have that is an accountability court that offers both treatment to these offenders, but at the same time holds them accountable for their offenses. It's long, it's intense. We have put in, we put in ninety-four people into that court. This time last year, that number was only fifteen. Trials, again, I told you that only about one percent of overall cases are going to trial. Well, in our circuit, we're actually trying more cases in the Fourteenth Circuit than any other solicitor's office in South Carolina except for Greenville. Let me give you a little bit of perspective on that. Greenville not only has a lot more population, they have roughly sixty lawyers. We have roughly twenty. So for the two and a half times warriors that they have, our numbers are far exceeding all these other jurisdictions except for Greenville. And we're going to eventually catch Greenville. Our backlog has dropped. We have seen a relatively substantial drop in our backlog by over thirteen hundred, almost fourteen hundred warrants. That drop is attributable to the fact that we are moving more cases than we are bringing in. Again, you're going to bring in a certain number of cases every year in every county. This number shows those warrants, but what it shows, something I think is particularly interesting. I put the triage system in in October. I've got some internal numbers that back that up, too. Court administration was showing that not only did we have ninety-seven hundred warrants when we started, and it was moving up, it starts taking a severe dive once we put this through tier, their tier system in. This is our internal cases. This is the number of pending cases we have throughout our circuit. What's interesting on this is the red line. The red line is how many cases we bring in per month. And that average is about two hundred and thirty-one per circuit, per, or per month for our entire circuit. That number's consistent. It's almost always consistent, and it, it has been for years. What is not consistent is how many cases we move. The yellow line shows how many cases we moved. And again, July, we moved a hundred and sixty-one compared to two seventy-three coming in. All of a sudden, October hits, we flip that switch. And the, and now what you can see is that we are averaging well over a hundred more cases, uh, disposed of than we're bringing in. And therefore, our overall cases is, is dropped from six thousand to, as of today, it's right at forty-six hundred. This is how we're comparing throughout the other state. I will tell you that I worked with the Supreme Court on this order. Uh, I also worked with the General Assembly on making sure that everybody was on the same page. I had a heads up. I, because I was working on the order, I knew it was going to happen, and I knew when it was gonna happen. So, um, I sort of got a quicker head start than the other solicitors. But you can see, the negative numbers is, are you taking cases away from your backlog? The positive, are you adding to your backlog? And as you can tell, the Fourteenth Circuit is well exceeded everybody else from the standpoint of moving more cases than we're bringing in and reducing our backlog. So it is very clear to me that this system works. It's clear to me that it is an important system, and not just because the Supreme Court said so. Again, it's the first game plan we've ever had. So here's the weakness. The weakness is, this is the number of pending cases, pending warrants that we have in Jasper County right now. And these are warrants. Now, if somebody breaks into your house and they steal something and they hurt somebody in there, that is gonna be one case, but it's gonna be three warrants. It's gonna be burglary, it's gonna be assault, and it's gonna be theft. So when you're looking at warrants, you're gonna have more warrants than you have cases. So when I tell you we have six thousand overall pending cases, those encompass a number of warrants. This is a warrant report. This ru, I ran this report today. As you can tell, one hundred and sixty-six warrants are between three hundred and sixty-six days old and five hundred and forty-four, and six hundred and eighty-seven are five hundred and forty-five days old. Bottom line is, eight hundred and fifty-three, or sixty percent of our overall warrant capacity in Jasper County is over a year old. That's too many. Uh, what I want to do is this. I think this plan works. The triage plan works, the rotation plan works, and I think we can do it with the same personnel that we have now, but we have to take a different approach. Right now, a solicitor that works on triage is bringing in roughly fifty-five cases per month. Thirty-seven of those are coming out of Jasper, another eighteen are coming out of Hampton. So they are doing a very good job on cases coming in and dealing with those new cases as they come in. Where they're not get, what they're not getting to are the older cases. And again, I assure you that every victim I have that's associated with that older vic, older warrant wants it happening now. Well, here's the idea. What I wanna do is I wanna take the same personnel we have. I wanna shift them over and give Jasper County its own team. Cut Hampton out of it. I can shift one lawyer over to handle the Hampton thing. It reduces the overall cost of this, uh, down to five hundred and ninety thou, ninety thousand for the overall team. And then what you do is you take those eighteen cases that they were working on from Hampton, and those are your Jasper old cases. So when you are on triage as a lawyer, you are not only getting, you're still getting fifty-five cases, but all of them are out of Jasper County, with an emphasis on not just the new, but also the old. We know the system works. The only thing we need to do at this point is figure out how to, I, I can take one victim advocate. I can take one career criminal prosecutor off of the Jasper-Hampton team, and I can send them working for Hampton and Allendale. You still have your career criminal prosecution unit every court month. You still have one lawyer for rotation for triage prep and court. You still have a victim advocate. You have a full team, but that team now is dedicated just to Jasper County, so they're not scrambling. That's my proposal to this. I've talked to, uh, I, I've talked to your administrator. I'll be glad to answer any questions you've got. But I'll, I will tell you this. I've never seen anything like this. I've seen us have good months and bad months. I've never seen the consistent numbers that we're getting. And it's pointing to a direction of where this, this developed order that the Supreme Court has handed us is exactly what we ought to do and how we ought to do it. And my suggestion is, we have three major counties in the Fourteenth Circuit as far as size, population, and caseload. Beaufort, Jasper, and Colleton. I've had the same conversation with Colleton, and I'm in the exact same process with Colleton as I'm having with you. And then I've gotta do a whole totally different thing with Beaufort County. But I would ask you to seriously consider this, uh, get us in a position to where we can have, give Jasper County, primarily the victims of Jasper County, their own team that works these court, these court weeks, the triage and the prep. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you've got. I know that's a lot of information, uh, relatively quickly. And you probably wanted me to stop earlier than that, but I couldn't. But I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. Uh, uh, again, thank you for having me, and I'm sorry I was a few minutes late.
It's okay. Thank you. Um, Mr. Solicitor, um, Mr. Kemp.
I just have one. Could you send this pro, uh, slide presentation to us?
Already have. Yes, sir.
So I can.
Be glad to.
I mean, you.
Yeah, this is it. Yep, got it. Yes, sir.
Joey?
Just a quick comment. I do like that it will afford the opportunity for speedy cases here in Jasper and kind of help keep everything, the ball rolling, so, um, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Very good job. Very good job.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate everything. And again, if you guys have any questions or there's anything that comes up, please let me know.
Will do. Will do. Thank you for having me. I appreciate everything. And again, if you guys have any questions or there's anything that comes up, please let me know. Will do. Will do. Okay. Where are we here? Are we to Ryan Romeo? Are they here?
Hi, I'm Ryan Lomano. I'll be standing in for him. Uh, if you would, Madam Chairman, uh, there were two items on the consent agenda that were taken off to be held as actions. Either that relate to this. One of them is Ms. Wagner's rezoning.
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
And.
Because of needing to have the zoning done before we do the development agreement, can we rearrange the order and take number eighteen and, um.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty-one.
Out of numerical order, get this out of the way.
Okay, so number twenty will be, um.
At, I.
Eighteen.
I'd like to have the, the public comment first, and then eighteen and nineteen.
If that's fine, I'll just defer the voting until we do the zoning. I'm happy to.
Well.
The kind of mixing, I know, it's all interrelated.
It's interrelated, but we're not even, th, those two are okay. It's just the, the other one that we have a public comment first. That's why I wanted it out of the consent agenda. So we do the public comment first, and we get that taken care of, and then we go down to the other two.
Right. It just, I, I'm fine with that. So if I, I understand what Mr. Kemp wants to do, uh, Madam Chairman, is I will do a very short introduction of the ordinance that we're going to delay until after we do the zoning, because there is a public hearing, and that development agreement requires two public hearings. We had one last time. This particular ordinance, uh, uh, the development ordinance is, um, adopting a structure for the creation of a solar farm out on Grace Highway across the street from the existing solar farm. Uh, we had a presentation on it at the last meeting. Um, there are provisions in there that provide for fees to be paid to the county commensurate with the fee-in-lieu agreement that you'll take up, guaranteed through the development agreement. It locks in the, uh, solar floating zone ordinance that will be adopted. It provides for, among other things, buffer requirements, setback requirements, screening requirements. Most importantly, that we discussed at length last time was the decommissioning plans to make certain that throughout the term of the agreement, that should the use of the solar farm cease, terminate, whatever, that there are provisions to make certain that the site is returned to a forested condition. And to do that, we have, uh, an engineering report that must be submitted every five years. It takes into account the salvage value of the steel metal, other salvage parts. And if it doesn't match, the, uh, the decommissioning cost is recalculated. The difference has to be covered by a bond that are approved by county council that is more than the cost of the decommissioning plan. The staff has worked hard under the development agreement to make certain that we follow the directions of the council and of the planning commission, which was to mitigate all of the visual impacts on the site so that you will be able to see it, uh, once the buffering is flushed out, much like Moffett Solar One across the street has done. Took a couple of years for the bushes to fill in, but it's, it's an effective screening. Having said that, uh, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. The representative is here of the developer. Should you want to ask him any questions prior to the public hearing.
I just, I would like to just make sure that, uh, with the very first meeting, the chairman said that we don't want to see it from the road. Just want to reinforce that. I would like you to go up and say that. We, we're putting you on the spot.
I'd love the gentleman who spoke last time to come up.
Hello. My name is Jacque Montreuil. I'm with Q cells, the developer. And you are right, our intention is for the project not to be seen from the road. It'll match that solar project across the street in terms of buffer.
I hope you understand why I said that.
Of course. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And it said, after our questions, the chair will open and answer, uh, call for public comment and public hearing.
Call for public hearing at this time. Public hearing going once. Public hearing going twice.
You have, you have a.
No, that's not. We're on solo. Public hearing three time and close. All right, what number be on now, Jacque? Jacque, I'm gonna be confused.
We now, if you please, uh, consider Ms. Wagner's ordinance to the solar floating zone, which is under consideration, a high number eighteen.
That's number eighteen.
Don't we have to, don't we have to, uh.
Remember it.
Make a res, uh, vote on the third reading? Or you want?
My preference is because we're gonna be locking in the zoning, it's not in place until you.
Okay.
Stop the zoning, do the zoning first, then come back and do this.
Good evening, Madam Chair, council members.
Good evening.
This has been for you two other times. Um, this is the rezoning for the solar farm floating zone to be applied to, um, five parcels that are located, um, along Grace Highway, Fire Tower Road and Langfordville Road. Moffett Solar Two LLC is proposing a seventy-four point nine megawatt solar farm. The electricity that will be generated from the PV solar panels will interconnect into Sandy Cooper's existing electrical grid. The anticipated project life is forty years. Their concept plan depicts the setbacks, buffers, access roads, areas of wetlands, and areas where the solar panels will be located. There's, um, also shown a hundred-foot vegetative buffer proposed along Grace Highway, Fire Tower Road, and Langfordville Road, where the property of Butts Residential Properties, a two-hundred-foot vegetative buffer is proposed, and a fifty-foot vegetative buffer is proposed along properties that are zoned rule preservation, which are all heavily forested. Other buffers include a fifty-foot riparian buffer around all wetlands. In addition to the buffers, a twenty-five-foot setback will be established along the interior of the buffer yards. The solar farm will have approximately five pods of solar panels. Each pod will be fenced in, creating a wildlife corridor, leaving the wetlands undisturbed. Um, Moffett Solar Two also entered into a purchase option agreement with the property owner, T R R Real Estate LLC, on December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, for the purpose of developing a solar farm. T R R Real Estate intends to retain a portion of parcel number zero five nine zero 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 one zero zero two, which will be su, subdivided at the time of purchase or contemporaneous with the purchase of the property. The buyer and the seller have also agreed through a memorandum of understanding that the buffer yard and setback requirement will be reduced to zero fee once the new boundary lines created for parcel number for that same parcel. Although security fencing will be constructed, both parties agree solar panels will not need to be screened from view for the remaining T R R Real Estate property. The planning commission recommends approval of the solar farm floating zone to be applied to the five parcel numbers shown on the agenda and in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, at this time, we're gonna open the floor for a public hearing.
Not necessary, this, this car on this one. You can have one if you want. It's not, not required.
Okay, it's not. It's down here. Let's move on.
Entertaining a third reading on that.
Okay. Call for a motion for, it is third, I'm gonna be listening. Call for a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve ordinance zero two, zero dash two zero two four dash eighteen, amending the official zoning map of Jasper County.
You're here a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in. Second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Moving right along. Mr. Taylor.
The third ordinance that is up for consideration on Moffett deals with the, excuse me, creation of multi-county business park, industrial park that includes this property. That converts the taxes into a fee, and the fee agreement that provides, uh, a set amount of money coming to the county for a period over thirty-year life. Other than the last ten years of the property, it averages about three hundred thousand dollars a year in, uh, fees coming, uh, instead of taxes, based upon a, um, megawatt, our payment of about twenty-nine hundred dollars per megawatt, again, seventy-four point nine megawatts through the year, which our investigation, using our financial analysts, show that to be the approximate going rate around the state for solar farms in present right now. This is a minimum, uh, investment target of ninety million dollars. The investment period is over five years. The military gets locked in. Uh, there's a clawback in case they don't, when I say clawback, there is a recovery of money if they don't meet their goals. Hampton County is our partner county in the multi-county park. And, um, we've already had a public hearing on this last time. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, it's the administration's request to pass the, uh, multi-county park and field ordinance.
Any questions?
No questions.
Let's call for a motion.
Like to make a motion to approve ordinance zero dash two oh two four dash eleven, authorizing the execution and delivery of fee-in-lieu and taxes of ad valour, ad valour taxes.
You're here a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in. Second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Let's move to the next, David Taylor.
Is to be back in the development agreement. We first had the public hearing on, um, which I spoke about earlier. Uh, it would be the administration's request that you favorably consider the approval of the development agreement as the order states. We'll still be making some technical insertions, survey, those types of things. And I'm doing a correction to the term of the agreement to meet substantial requirement under. doing a correction to the term of the agreement to meet statute requirement under Title Six, Chapter Thirty-One. It was accidentally misstated in there in the term. Term is set by statute.
Okay. Any questions? Call for motion.
Like to make a motion. This is on number ten, correct?
Yes.
That's the number ten.
Back to the, yes, number ten.
Just want to make sure. Public for consideration of ordinance zero dash two oh two four dash nineteen, authorizing the execution and delivery of development agreement for Moffett Solar Two.
You're here second.
Second.
It's been properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Now, what about, um, huh? Okay, come on. Okay, Kim.
Thank you again, Madam Chair and members of council. This is the, this is a public hearing and second reading of the budget amendment ordinance. There were some changes in this ordinance from the first reading. We, there were some changes to the revenue line items. So we've added a paragraph regarding the budget amendment regarding revenue items that were changed. The ARPA revenue and the revenue for the ARPA for the Pratt Memorial Library, we had three point four million dollars worth of revenue in there as well as, so to be consistent, at the first reading, Mr. Kemp had questioned about the two hundred thousand dollars being revenue in the public works. And that was, that is a grant revenue, and generally, and in the past, we do not include grant revenue in the operating budget. We have it separately in the grant funds. When the grants are completed, we reconcile the grant, and then any difference is moved into the operating budget as grant matching funds. When we did the budget this year, we included the three point four million dollars of ARPA funds for the library in order to have it recognized basically because we had, because it, the, the law, ARPA law, requires that we either have the money expended or have it, have it, I can't think of the word, committed, thank you, committed. And we now have a resolution that commits the funds, the ARPA funds for the library. And in order to be consistent, I went ahead and took, reduced that revenue for this budget amendment. So those two items, three point four million and the two hundred thousand are coming out as revenue, and the off, the offsetting expenditures are also being removed from the budget. So also included a, some budget amendments regarding the reclassification of expenditures, including the cost of living increases and new personnel to the appropriate salary and wage or part-time line items, and various coroner department line items. And then also, there were some additional amendments that the council has approved or in prior meetings that I included in this budget amendment so that we could have them ratified in this, in this ordinance. So one of those, I talked about the, I don't know if you can see it down there, the grant matching funds. We had, I had a couple of typos there last, at the last first reading. Those have been corrected, and there have been no changes to, nothing moving forward in the grant matching funds. That amount budgeted is one million fifty thousand dollars. In the capital outlay, there was, there is money that has been transferred over, and that's for projects that are anticipated to be less than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that were postponed until fiscal year twenty-five. And a portion of it is reclassed to the detention center for shower and toilet replacement and for the, also for the purchase of one twelve Weathersby. So that's what the one point two million is. And that eight hundred and thirty-six thousand for Weathersby is actually included in that one point two at this point. There were some minor changes to the salary and wages for the, what the council approved for the contract with Allied Security for the detention center. You see those in that long list, the highlighted ones there are those changes. And then the changes for the actual fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget is that the two hundred thousand, we had, I had originally proposed that a part of the money for the, for the purchase of the tractors and, tractors and mowers in engineering services would come from that two hundred thousand, but because that two hundred thousand is part of the grant fund, all of that is being removed from the budget. And the fifty thou, the additional fifty thousand for the tractors and mowers will actually come from the shop equipment line item. So those, that's been revised in the budget. And the, there's some minor items, ten thousand for the juvenile housing. We have some additional increases in the medical services contract that was approved previously. So we took ten thousand out of the juvenile housing expense and added it to the medical services contract, and I believe that's it. The three million five hundred ninety nine thousand is the ARPA funds that we're, we're taking out of there. So I know that was a lot of going back and forth, but I think we, that clarifies the treatment of the grants and also makes it consistent, the ARPA fund and the C fund grant. So again, this is a public hearing and a second reading. And we will have another public hearing on the seventh.
At this time, I'm going to open the floor to the public. Any questions? No, I'll let you, I'll, I'll let you come up. Second, any, those close to the public hearing. Okay. Now we're going to call for a motion from the council.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a few questions on it. Why wouldn't we have just on the grant, the grant is always, there's no grants in here? Or do we, at the end of the year, we don't?
There's no grants in here now. So at the end of the year, we reconcile the grant-
Arbor bank account.
So-
I just didn't understand what that meant.
That's-
We have the money.
So we spend the money from the general fund bank account. When that money is spent, the money is transferred from the bank account where the ARPA funds sit to reimburse the general fund.
Is that Arbor Fund, our fund?
Yes. That, that money is sitting in a separate bank account as required by the federal government when we got that money.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick question. Now that we've moved those funds around and you cleaned everything up with the C fund, we've got everything good for public works?
Yes.
Okay. And did we anticipate any other changes before third reading?
Perhaps property purchases, and I guess we wouldn't do anything with the solicitor. We would have to do something with the solicitor perhaps. But I don't know that that would be before, we might have to come back with another ordinance at some point.
Right.
Okay. It's been, um, the motion was made?
No motion was made yet.
Okay. Calling for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to have ordinance zero dash two oh two four dash twenty-two to amend Jasper County, County ordinance zero two oh two three dash oh nine fiscal year two thousand twenty-four county budget.
You're here second.
Second.
It's been properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Before, um, we go to, um, I'm going to go back. Mr. Lucas? Discussion and request of non-standard use of county property?
Back on July thirty-first, there was an application made for the use of two ball fields at the, what we call the J R Y B field, but it's actually two baseball fields that are owned by Jasper County. As it turns out, these, the request that was made was for a non-standard use of the ball fields, meaning that the request that was made was not for an athletic purpose, but for another purpose, which would be a class reunion for the Jasper High School class of nineteen ninety-four. There were a number of complicating factors on this particular application, and so there was some miscommunication apparently with the person who signed off on it, didn't understand apparently that they were signing off on an actual lease agreement as opposed to accepting money for payment. And so this didn't really come to light until about three weeks ago. With that being said, this would require a special use permit for an applicant to use Jasper County property for a purpose in which it is not intended. And so I spoke with the applicant, as well as had a sit-down meeting with them a couple of times last week, and he has filed the special event permit. However, the requirements of special use permit have not yet been fulfilled by the applicant, and so therefore it is an incomplete application. So there are a number of items that are yet to be understood for the benefit of the county and for the benefit of law enforcement, both with the sheriff's office as well as the Town of Ridgeland Police Department, since the land is situated within the Town of Ridgeland. Also, there is an insurance policy that identifies the county against a number of things, including damage to the property. However, it appears that the property has not been properly identified in the insurance documents. So those are three things that would need to be clarified and cleared up, I would suggest, before the county were to entertain this special use permit. Now, I also would like to bring to your attention that the property in question, the two ball fields, are actually under a lease agreement with the Jasper Ridgeland Youth Baseball Incorporated. And so the lease agreement with them between the lease, between J R Y B and the county requires that if the ball fields are used for any other purpose, including athletic purposes during the term of the lease, that whoever it is, the applicant that proposes to use the property, would need to have the approval of Jasper County, the owner of the property, as well as Jasper Ridgeland Youth Baseball Incorporated, the less C of the property. So those are the complicating factors that caused us to bring this forward to you. And as I said before, we bring it to you, and it's, the special use, or the special event permit is currently incomplete, but we thought we brought it to, we bring it to you at this point and to determine whether or not you wanted to approve it as an incomplete document, or whether you would like to direct the staff to do something different and direct the applicant to do something different.
Counsel?
All right. With this being a, there was some miscommunication from the initial application there, and then discovering that some of these special event permits would subsequently have to be filled out, and we don't have another council meeting before the fourth. It would be my recommendation that we allow the applicant to try to get all of those signatures signed off from what is on here, as well as from the town, the J Y R B, to be able to use these facilities if they could do so.
Yes, Mr. Rowland, that's the council's wish. We will, as staff, work very diligently with the applicant to try to get all of the incomplete matters completed.
Should that be put in the resolution? Can we use that as a resolution? Just so you vote on it?
Is it, um, is this what they were talking about down here?
Yes, ma'am. So we need the approval of the sheriff's department, we need the approval of, in this case, the police department, the fire department, and also it, there's a zoning matter through the planning and building department. So there are a number of departments, and also, we need an approved parking plan also for this particular event. The applicant has talked to a number of private businesses, or public agencies in some cases, for the use of their property for this event. I would advise you, there is no space for parking of vehicles along the actual access point between the ball fields and the school board's property.
Chairman, if I might assist, I believe what would be required to, is for it to be a motion to conditionally include the special event permit. The conditions is outlined by Mr. Lucas about all the other signatures, the other agencies consent of J five, J R Y B, the parking plan be satisfied prior to then.
I think that's what Councilman Rollins said. It would, it would require a motion and sec, a motion would be- I'll second his motion.
Okay. Motion is been properly moving, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So some of those applicants are here, and you've signed in to speak when we get to public comment. So we're going to move along. Mr. Folger?
Madam Chair, there's been a confusing order on the agenda, but I think the next one up is number twelve.
Yeah.
You still have twelve, thirteen, and item number, twelve, thirteen, and twenty to get through.
All right.
Madam Chair, I go ahead with twelve.
That's right, that's where we are, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Consideration of first reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Chair, members of the council. It is ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-four there. This is concerning the sale of property, specifically ten acres of property from the county-owned Cypress Bridge Industrial Park. And the sale is to S and P Produce, Inc., formerly known as Project Veggie. And the ordinance authorizes the county administrator to execute such contracts, amendments, deeds, and other documents as may be necessary and appropriate to effect the sale. It is a sale price of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's fifteen, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is fifteen thousand per acre. I'll remind you, Project Veggie proposes to spend approximately three million dollars and to employ twenty-one people over a five-year period, respectfully requesting your consideration of having first reading of this ordinance this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions?
No questions.
Call for a motion.
Like to make a motion authorizing the sale of S and, to S and P Produce, a ten-acre parcel, more or less being subdivided out of the original forty-acre parcel. ten-acre parcel more or less being subdivided out of the original forty-acre parcel.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. You know, Mr. Folger, I'm just...
Fifteen.
Fifteen. David Teller of Camwood.
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again, this is a special services contract for an ADA accessibility software tool. We bring this before you because it is, we consider it a special service, and therefore the council has to approve all special service contracts. The department head, or the department person, Ms. Williams, vetted several different contractors, and she, software providers in particular, and she recommends Recite Me Company as the soft, as the software provider that we should use in order to meet our requirements for ADA accessibility, and I think that's all, other than that, because it is a special service, we do not have to do a bid process, but we do have to bring it to you for your approval.
Okay, do you have any questions?
Yes, this is for the computers, right? For website and all that? And I would like to see the, you had on there, it was section or, section A, I guess, the subject A, was only forty-nine percent. I would like to see the, the report on that, just to see what it's like.
Prior to, now?
No, it's just, I just wanna see it.
Okay, I'll ask Ms. Wade to provide that.
Okay, at this time, call for motion.
Make a motion that we approve the special services contract for the ADA accessibility software tool.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second, all in favor of say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Teller.
Yes, ma'am, this is the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank modification to the ordinance that we'd previously done that set forth the obligations and responsibilities of Jasper County in regard to the multi-layer funding for the exit three project. As I stated at the last meeting, working with the city of Hardyville for quite a number of years now, and the state infrastructure bank, and the Department of Transportation, with the passage of years, the cost of the project have risen, a new funding program has been brought forward. It requires as part of that that the county agree to extend the term of the loan repayment system with the infrastructure bank from fifteen to twenty-five years, and authorizes the access to the entire loan amount of twenty-eight million dollars and change. Authorizes the administrator and the chairman to sign such other documents as may be necessary to move the financing forward for exit three. This is a public hearing as well as the third reading. We can answer any questions that you have. No, exit three has been up here several times over the last two years as we worked on the financing.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, we're gonna now open the floor for a public hearing. Going once, going twice, going three times. Public hearing closed. Okay? Call, did I call for a motion?
Not yet. I make a motion that we approve the third reading of ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-four dash seventeen, amending Jasper County Ordinance zero dash twenty twenty-three dash twenty by authorizing and approving the modified terms of the loan from the state infrastructure bank.
Thank you. Call for a second?
Second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Now the floor is open to the public. We have Ms. Betty Thomas.
Madam Chair, when she comes up, can I make the clarification of approval and consent agenda was changed? Item twenty, the sale of property, looking at holdings was approved? That would be item twenty, I have, I have new set.
The numbers that we pulled off these... Twenty-one was not approved.
No, we had not the two.
Twenty-one was, was actually tabled, item twenty on the consent agenda, it stayed on and it was, is now approved.
I don't think we did that one.
No, twenty is not.
If that be the case, could I ask that we take out item twenty? This item is the third reading of, authorizing the sale of some property, approximately five acres at Cypress Ridge Industrial Park. This is the Ohio Ratings property that's been vacant for a while, it's next to the spec building that Tyco Gopher Hill Holdings purchased last year. It's being offered to them for a little over a million dollars, and...
We did approve it. We did approve it.
I wasn't certain because the numbers have shifted.
No, twenty-one was the one we were gonna take off. I took of eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-one.
With that clarified, I can sit back there.
Okay. Ms. Thomas? She would like to speak on the traffic on Jenkins Avenue.
Good evening, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Betty Thomas, and I reside at eight fourteen Jenkins Avenue in Hardyville. I am here on behalf of what is considered the residentially zoned Jenkins Avenue community as it relates to the four commercial facilities currently housed on Jenkins Avenue. I need to know how did this happen? The constant and overwhelming commercial traffic, eighteen-wheelers and trash haulers, primarily to and from Jenkins Plumbing and the metal recycling facilities, is unacceptable and disruptive to the residents. To put it mildly, we are sick and tired of being sick and tired of this traffic which has created deplorable road conditions along with disruptive levels of noise in the community. Jenkins Avenue is approximately twenty feet wide and should be not accommodating this type of traffic that will surely increase in coming years. Highway forty-six runs parallel to Jenkins Avenue and should be considered, which is readily available and is more suitable for the type of commercial traffic. We are requesting the above option to be addressed by the council to eliminate the current condition. We will wait the council's prompt review and response accordingly. Any questions?
Well, when you're doing a public comment, we can't ask a question or we can't respond.
Okay.
But, Mr. Folger, has your name and address and everything, and he'll get back with you. Then we will move from there.
All right, wonderful, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Derek Myers, alumni homecoming activities?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Derek Myers. My reason for wanting to do this event is because I needed a draw. And what I mean by I needed a draw is like if I say I'm doing a voter registration drive, nobody's gonna come. If I say I'm doing a health and wellness check for blood pressure or diabetes, nobody's gonna come. If I do book, free books for little Johnny, 'cause he is in fifth grade and he can't read on a first-grade level, they're not gonna come. But I knew if I did the tailgating event, everybody would come out, and we will have those things there. I've worked with the sheriff, I've even reached out to Council Rowell about contacting, about contacting the Lodge number ninety-eight about parking there. I spoke to Ms. Danny Dallas, so I can get in touch with her about parking by the DMV, and she told me we're gonna meet when I come back, I'm gonna be out of town. And I've met with Mr. Lucas last week, and we're gonna meet again, but I'll be out of town from Tuesday to Friday, so if there's anything that I need to do, I will be, I will do it, and I will make sure that it's done. He asked for a parking plan, but most of the people around was like, they gave us our, their word, but I couldn't really get nothing to write in. I have a letter that is composed for them to sign off on, but nobody was willing to sign it. I signed, I talked to the bishop at the church, I talked to, Mr. Rowell got in touch with the Lodge, so that's, I mean, and then it had parking at the school, so that's part of the parking plan. But I worked with Mr. Lucas, Mr. Danny Lucas, as far as trying to get whatever you all need done, because this is a way that we all could like get a chance to see who's running for what office, what seat, because a lot of the districts have changed. Some people need to know what write me in mean as far as with the election goal, so I feel like this is a pivotal time for us to bring the community together and do this event, so that's why I'm here tonight to make sure we're clear with everything. All right? All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next, we will have Mr. Maurice Lawyer, alumni homecoming.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Maurice Lawyer, I am the executive director of the Legacy Foundation, and in part with the event that Derek is planning, what we're doing is raising money for the community. At this point, we have over thirty classes that have committed to participating in homecoming tailgate this year. That's over thirty classes that goes back as far as nineteen seventy, that have now committed to participating. The funds that'll be raised for, the proceeds that'll be raised will go to cover the expenses. Derek hasn't talked about that, but he's covered from the insurances that shows that it has an allocation for damages to the property, it shows the address to the property, that's on the invoice that we have, that he has for that. It will cover the rental expense, we have porta-johns, the dumps, all different things that he has taken the steps to cover those expenses. And so those expenses will come out of that, out of that fees, and then whatever proceeds will be left will be donated to the Legacy Foundation of South Carolina and would help with our programs that we work with kids here in Jasper County. We provide after-school tutoring, social emotional support, and we also provide academic field trips for our students here in Jasper. We both work on both ends of Jasper in Ridgeland and in Hardyville. We are in the public schools and the charter. So this is a really good event, and it will make a huge community impact, and we ask that you give us your support in doing so. Mr. Lucas, if there is something that you would require of Derek or the team to present to the council or to your office, we ask, I ask that you compile a list of that, and then you can either email it to Derek or myself, if he's out of town, I'll make sure he gets it, and make sure that those items are checked off and make, so that's satisfiable to the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna speak on one minute?
One minute?
No.
I come up with Maurice, just to that one minute? I think you have a minute left.
Yeah, you got one minute.
I'm the chairman of the Legacy Foundation of South Carolina, and I coached Little League football for over thirty-one years. And we started to take this time to let you know that we are continuing an effort to help the kids in Jasper County. And so our goal is to work on the academic piece, and so that's why we're in all these different churches, and there's different schools, to try to help that academic piece. And the fund from this will go to support our initiative, and I appreciate your, your, supporting our program, and I will certainly be more grateful if we can be able to meet his goals with the rules and the standards. But he also mentioned to me that we're supposed to go up the field by nine o'clock, so if there's a time can be shifted on that, we would appreciate if you all could work on that for us too, because we might not be able to clear the field by nine o'clock.
Okay, Mr. Folger?
Madam Chair, members of the council, I'll keep it brief. Exit three I had in my report, I think I've given you a little briefing on that, we have some paperwork to present to you, I'll send that out tomorrow via email to you on the new loan, as Mr. Tetter described it, the coverage ratio on the payments of that.
Ms. Dana? Excuse me, Andy. Call Ms. Dana Reed back in here, please. Oh, okay.
And the letters that we've sent to the South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank Board. Jasper County Capital Program, we've included in the packet in B Con's monthly report for you, and then some additional information on the South Carolina Resilient Coastal Communities Collaboration Program, I briefly mentioned that to you verbally at your last meeting, we did get the paperwork, we've accepted that, there's no obligation on our part, just the potential of having some grant opportunities there, so we look forward to working on that. I don't have anything else to report out unless, of course, you have any questions of me.
We do have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chairman, just one question. The farmer's market on the Con deal? I've asked a name not to be said tonight, but several times about the railing, the front railing of that, it was unbolted the last time I looked, and what, they did try to bolt it, and when they bolted, the whole railing goes off. That's gonna be a dangerous thing, it's just like a leverage now. And I asked several times for her to look at that, and I don't know if she did or not, just wish you would look into that.
I'll have somebody take care of it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? Remember comment if you have any?
Yes, I would like to thank the staff for putting the check registers online. Got a lot of good reports about that, thank you very much, it was a great thing. I attended the Great Island Council about the coming transportation referendum, nothing to report, it was all mostly about Beaufort, but we're both working on it diligently. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rowell?
I'd like to echo the same thing Councilman Kemp said about the stuff being put on to the website, thank you all for making that happen. The other thing, I've had a bunch of folks reach out to me since our last workshop with the overlay district, I did tell them to try to make the public hearing this Thursday, but what is the time for the public hearing? I'm seeing five and I'm seeing six advertised, five o'clock is at the Maritime Center, okay, five o'clock, all right, perfect, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rowell. Okay, and then, same thing, we had same meetings, and the people have to understand what this overlay district is about, and like I tell them, if they don't start coming to these meetings so that they can understand and know, because I don't think that's the intentions of this council or administration here to try and take your property. I know things have happened with property, but that's not the intentions of this council, so, and if you have any questions, Mr. Folger, Ms. Lisa Wagner, Mr. David Teller, those are the people you need to get in touch with who knows what's going on. Okay? So with that being said, I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn, or, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
It's been properly moved?